We would invite all of the characterate journalists in a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have sinned against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
It is now seven o'clock. The Council of the House of Commons has called to order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you see it, please? A call, please, Mr. Cullen?
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin, here. Mr. McLaughlin.
For the record, Councilman McLaughlin is, I think he's due his last service with the air guard, so that's why he's not here this evening.
May I excuse Councilmember McLaughlin for a second?
Motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to excuse Councilman McLaughlin in secret. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
And motion passes.
Mayor, I view the council designate Mr. Roberts as Vice President pro temp for tonight's meeting.
Say. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to designate Councilman Roberts as President pro temp, Vice President of the Civil Service. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Now dispense with the reading of the journal from March 20, 2023.
To move?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the journal from March 20, 2023. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
And motion passes. We now move to public comment. If anyone this evening has any public comment they would like to make or reserve time for comment during a piece of legislation, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and we'll reserve time or make your comment now.
Thank you. JCL, the 19th and 19th of July. I'd like to reserve time to discuss Resolution 9, 2023, please.
Thank you. There you go, or seeing no public comment here. We'll look forward to reports from standing special committees. The Council, the Community and Economic Development Committee did not meet. Takes us to the Public Works and General Operations Committee. Councilman Robb.
The committee met on the 28th, discussed a few items. Among those were, Mr. Dean got the committee. As of today, his count of long-time base in properties is up to 27. We had some discussion on what possible outcomes of those would be and, you know, as far as the landowners and so on and so forth. He's going to continue to look into that and make contact with landowners and see what we can do about bringing those properties back for use. Mr. Geis brought up several things, one of which is a review of the current property, external property maintenance ordinance for possible updates and changes to comply with the current law. Had a discussion about dissolving the Floodplain Management Commission. Mayor addressed the committee on that. I think we can look for some legislation in the future concerning that issue. Still working on the possible solution to the pickleball construction issue. Mr. Geis seems to believe that they've come to a resolution to that. We may see something on that again here in the near future. And information will be out in April for sidewalk projects for more information from Mr. Geis on that. And also, we discussed possible changes in charges for the zoning permits that are issued by the city. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Robb. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robb in regard to this report? There are none. Move forward to the Parking Committee. That committee did not meet. We arrive at reports of city officials.
Mayor, if I could interject, the Finance Committee will meet a week from Friday, Friday, April 14th, at 3:30 p.m. At City Hall.
So the council all heard that and will make note the Finance Committee will meet on the 18th at 3:30 at City Hall. Thank you. You're welcome.
The 40th.
40th. Reports of city officials, so the mayor's report. Since the last council meeting, I have been, I shall have typical mayorial duties. In lieu of the full agenda and two proclamations and a confirmation, we consider I will not present a full report this evening, but I would always entertain any questions at the conclusion of my time. But we do have with us this evening Bridgette Coles and some fellow workers of her from Richmond County Children's Services. And we do have a proclamation raising awareness that this is Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I have a proclamation to deliver. And I believe she and her friends have some things they want to deliver to the city here. So let me make this proclamation. I'll read the proclamation. And then if you have something you'd like to extend to the city, that'd be wonderful. So you all want to stand while I give the proclamation to both of the places. This is all for you and all your efforts. We appreciate them very much. Whereas children in Richmond County are our most valuable resource and need our support to thrive and grow into healthy, productive adults. And whereas during National Child Abuse Prevention Month, we renew our unwavering commitment to protecting children and responding to child abuse, promoting healthy families, and building a brighter future for all. And whereas every child deserves a nurturing family and a safe environment, free from fear of abuse and neglect. And whereas parents, guardians, relatives, and neighbors all share a responsibility to prevent these devastating crimes, and our local government plays a critical role as well. And whereas since 1883, the agency has been committed to helping future generations succeed and is focused on ensuring the safety and well-being of all families and is partnering with local, state, and federal agencies to improve the lives of children and their families. And whereas I today call upon all Shelby residents to join the effort to keep children safe and families strong. Now therefore, I, Stephen L. Shea, Mayor of the City of Shelby, do hereby proclaim April 23rd as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all citizens to join Richmond County Children's Services and its partners as they support each family's efforts to keep themselves and their children safe, healthy, and in a nurturing environment. And furthermore, I call upon all residents to observe this month with programs and activities that help prevent child abuse and provide for our children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs. In witness whereof, I hereby and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed this third day of April in the year of our Lord, 2023. And so briefly thank you and everyone that you work with for protecting our children, providing those nurturing environments, and helping all of Richmond County. So God bless you for all you do. And this is, this is for you. Want to get a photo there? We'll move this back over. We'll have everybody here. There we go. A good breakfast found here. One more time.
Just kidding.
I'm sure you're familiar with me around here, so I'm sure we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Well, on behalf of Richmond County Children's Services, I want to thank Mayor Shea and also Shelby City Council for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Joining me this evening from RCCS to accept the proclamation and present you all with blue ribbons that they made to raise awareness about child abuse prevention, our kinship navigator, Arlie Nixon, and also independent living case worker, Mary Stephen. These ladies are doing a great work with children and families that we serve in Richmond County. I also wanted to offer you a quick synopsis of what we had to deal with in 2022 and the difference that we're making in the community. In 2022, we provided services to 1,599 alleged victims of abuse. We took custody of 70 children. We had 134 children in custodial care, and we saw 40 children adopted, which was wonderful. Children's Services has a total of 66 foster homes that are available for children who cannot be placed with family members and also contracts for out placements. So with the number of 134 that we're averaging in our care, only 66 homes, we desperately need foster families. One concern that we have been dealing with is a growing number of children involved in potential abuse cases who are testing positive for drugs in their systems. Last year, we had 22 children from the ages of one week old to nine and a half years of age who tested positive for cocaine, 14 who tested positive for marijuana, with some testing positive for both. And then we had one three and a half-year-old who tested positive for Benadryl. Now, some of the children did overdose, but there haven't been any fatalities. So we actually did less than that. But again, we thank you so much for the proclamation. And we will now give you the blue ribbons. And also, to any part of the community that would like to be a foster parent, we want to have them. Those are the trainings that we have available.
And thank you. And actually, this ribbon's been working to make up some ribbons our own. So we're going to be out there hanging lots of ribbons here in the near future. And Wednesday is Wear Blue.
Wear Blue, that's on.
Wear Blue on Wednesday. That's the color.
You have one April to 12. Everybody will wear it. And then if you go to Buckeye Bakery, they're going to be giving away free blue ribbon cookies. If you come in on the 12th and you are wearing blue instead of going for Children's Services, you get free cookies.
That works. Thank you, Angel. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it very much. And feel free to make your service. I'm hanging out a whole lot of inspiring people. Figured out a lot of things to do this evening. And the next proclamation, we normally do this on Arbor Day itself, but I think this one, marking our 40th, I think deserves a special recognition, definitely rarefied air for a city to be celebrating the 40th year of being a Tree City USA. Councilman Gates, Mike, would you have been the mayor when we first became a Tree City in 1980 period?
Yes, sir.
So that is even more rare to have the mayor in our presence when we became a Tree City USA. And here, Councilman Gates is, on 40 years later, later or not, and is celebrating with us. So thank you and all who were involved in that in 1983. We sure appreciate that. And here we are, celebrating a remarkable accomplishment. But so I believe the proclamation speaks for itself of how important this Tree City USA status is. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed as the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Shelby has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 40 years and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, I, Stephen L. Shea, Mayor of the City of Shelby, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Shelby and do further urge all Shelbyans to support the efforts of our Shade Tree Commission to protect our trees and woodlands and to support Shelby's urban forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. In witness whereof, I hereby and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed on this, this is the 28th day of April, 2023. And so again, that's another remarkable day for Shelby, our 40th year as Tree City USA. And again, thank you, former Mayor Garland Gates. Appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome.
Continuing with business under my portion of reports, I do have a motion for a confirmation from the Deputy of Cheryl Reed to the Civil Service Commission to fill an unexpired term ending 12/31/26. Mr. Martin?
I move to confirm the Deputy of Cheryl Reed to the Civil Service Commission to fill an unexpired term ending 12/31/2026.
Say.
A motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, a couple meetings ago, you had mentioned you had had three applications received to be on the Civil Service Commission. And I had asked for, and you provided copies of their applications. And I'm trying to understand, as I read the three, how it is that your nominee is the most qualified of the three?
This process, just like most of our application processes for community commissioning, starts with the application. So I did carefully review each one of the three applicants, all their applications, from stem to stern. I conducted phone interviews with each applicant, same format with each applicant, getting feedback from them. You know, pulling about what the commission is, what they do, how they work with the chiefs and so forth. I saw that we see input from Chief Thompson and Chief Holmes, who are working closely with this commission. And so putting together all the information, I chose the candidate that I've used to be the one who would best fill the vacancy at this time. The very last one is always interesting because it says what kind of experience or background you have to this particular position. And in some cases, we've had candidates in the past that really, in their past experiences, their life experience and so forth, would not really pertain to that. But in speaking with them, speaking with the chiefs and so forth, I believe Ms. Reed will work well with this commission. Yes, sir.
Well, I thank you for those comments. I know Mrs. Reed. She's a fine individual. I know Mr. Shoemaker, likewise a fine individual. The third applicant, Trevor Reed, I don't know him. Should be as probably an outstanding individual as well. But again, you know, seeing what here is on paper, I'm still concerned.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
A motion to confirm passes. Are there any other questions to be added under my reports? Move on to Mr. Crum, Director of the House.
Thank you, sir. Pretty much normal business around my departments. The income tax collection for March is just a tinge down from last March, but that doesn't really surprise me. It all depends on when people want to file their tax return this time of year. So I'm not too worried about that. The auditors will be out Wednesday and Thursday of this week. State auditors will be here doing their onsite tests. I'm sure they'll be out a few more times, but they're going to really get a lot started here. We're working very hard to make sure we get them all the information they need to get this audit done sooner in the year. Today, the mayor of the Department of Finance, Director and myself, met with the judge and the courts to talk about some of the past issues that they've had with their audits. The, I guess, one thing, unclaimed funds. They're supposed to report to the city every year, turn over any monies. That is being done today. They will expect to have a PO redbox for the transfer funds to the city by Wednesday. So that is being taken care of. The bank reconciliations, as we spoke, I guess, last council meeting, they had made a comment that they have gotten down to a regular difference. They're reconciling to the same amount monthly now. We had lengthy discussions today about that. The difference now goes back to 2017, 2018, before Shannon was actually there. And they're continuing, her and Shannon and Tina, who had served in that position at one time, they are continuing to look through the remaining months to try and find those items. They're going to continue to do that through the audit because the state auditors ask that they get the audit before we do anything. They don't have high hopes of finding the remaining differences mainly because of, you know, now there was nobody here at the time that had done those entries. I did last week contact our insurance agent about the employee bonds and whether this should be covered. He did not feel that way. He called his claim adjuster and he also felt, based on the information, that they would not cover any work that we would do to hire a firm, an outside firm, or someone to, you know, do this, to try and catch up these last differences. You know, in my humble opinion, it would be difficult. At this point, they've had the state auditor look these over, a local accounting firm, their accounting software program who assists them in some cases with bank records and that sort of thing. I think it would, we would spend a lot of money to find the remaining differences, which is about $3,000 in each one of their two accounts. One is positive, one is negative. So they'll keep looking. We'll see what the auditors come up with. And then we'll bring some suggestions back to council as far as those go. Another issue they had was they were failing to request reimbursement for bank fees from the general fund. As of today, I signed that PO to catch those up because those accounts are supposed to reconcile at zero. And so, you know, obviously, the bank fees are coming out of the accounts. It's somebody else's money they're spending to do it. So they should be reimbursed monthly by the general fund for those fees, which we caught up now and we will make sure that happens every month in the future. And both the Deputy Director and myself will be receiving copies of the bank reps every month in the future to make sure that this does not happen again. I think that's all I have on that issue right now. I will keep it posted as anything changes. That serves pretty much as my info for the day.
Mr. Crum? Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum regarding his report? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I think that a majority of council last meeting made very clear that we want those two accounts at the municipal court balanced to the penny. Period. End of report. At this point, I don't care how much time it takes. I don't care that no one in that office now was there when this first started. But they perpetuated it because audit after audit after audit after audit up to the last one. And we're going to see it in the next audit for 2022. We're going to get the same citations of a significant deficiency. I hope that the Finance Director made that very clear to the judge and to the clerk. We want those funds balanced to the penny. This council member doesn't care that one is $3,000 in sum to the positive and the other is $3,000 in sum to the negative. And, you know, you add them together and you get a difference of $100. The Finance Director and his deputy balance many, many, many funds every month to the penny. And I sound like a broken record. I'm not asking the court to do anything that I don't expect from the Finance Department. Some of this may be, you know, the old stubborn German in me and my OCD, but my wife and I balance our checking account to the penny every month without fail. And if it doesn't balance the first time, we go back and look for it again and again and again till it does balance. Again, I'm not asking any more than what I do myself and what the Finance Department already does.
Noted. Mr. Martin?
Let's piggyback on that. Because I certainly hope, Mayor, what we are not hearing as a council is a trying to test this council's resolve in what we have stated previously over and over and over again. This council member is not going to be worn down. And frankly, the judge and the administration are trying this council member's patience on coming up with a plan of actual accountability and action. I don't care if it's $3,000. I'm like-minded with Councilman Gates. The amount is inconsequential. The bottom line is, we are responsible for those funds. And it wasn't just malfeasance, there was non-feasance in dealing with those funds and those monies. And I am, I was at the end of my rope, not last December, the December before, when we got the bad audit. But I was told, have patience. Let's let them try to fix it. Then we get another bad audit in December. And here we are, four months later. And I have very little faith that we are being taken seriously. As a council, we are calling for accountability. And soon... if something doesn't drastically happen and the administration and the judge continues to try this council member's patience, then there is going to be legislation brought to the floor of council that's going to start forcing people's hands on accountability. We can lead a horse to water, I get it. But that does not mean that we are an impotent council without the ability to force accountability. I'm at the end of my rope on this. We better start being talks of actual accountability. Stop the nonsense talks about, well, it could be better, it may get better, and you know what, we can just write this off. That is unacceptable. And again, I'm at the end of my rope on this. And I'm done talking about it. And the next steps accounted for this council member is gonna be legislative action. And I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to count to at least three on that. Stop trying to test our resolve and give the citizens of Shelby what they deserve, and that is true, actual, meaningful accountability. And not this nonsense trade that we got going on.
Mr. Rob.
Well, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but, um, you know, this, this does need to be taken care of. The awareness came years ago, and that's when action should have been taken was years ago, when this problem was first discovered. And it really doesn't matter who was in office and who was responsible for it before then. They found the error and just set it aside, and set it aside, and set it aside, and set it aside. Instead of doing what they should have done in the first place, to go and find out what the problem was, we're just overlooking, maybe it'll go away, is, is, is kinda what I'm seeing the attitude being here. And that's just not gonna happen. And, and I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Martin that, that if this isn't taken care of, then we, we need to look at some legislation to deal with it.
Thank you. For the comments? All right. We'll move forward then to organize the law. Your court, Mayor. Mr. Gates.
Thank you.
We all got emailed from the county engineer, Smiley Bridge, what happened to COVID for Monday. I do not, you know, have a reason why I'm assuming whatever they're discussing. But that'll be a ninety-day closure. I think you all got a meeting, or ODOT, a meeting over ODOT for District Three. There's step, I did attend that. Basically, they're just, they're required by the federal transportation or federal highway to have these meetings, to talk about the project. The only thing that was on that step for Shelby was the Smiley at New Bridge. And they do plan FY twenty-six to replace one of the culverts. It headed in the area of a Y of ninety-six and thirty-nine. I emailed over to get a response in which one it was, but we gotta figure it out. I'll keep you updated when we hear more on that. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Questions, comments for Mr. Gates? We'll move forward then to new business. Is there any new business to be brought before council? Here you go. We'll go to unfinished business. Labor consultants. An RFQ document has been drawn up and is under review. I expect to send that out shortly. I kind of did a little survey among area mayors on some firms that they might recommend and so forth. And hoping to have RFQ responses back by April the twenty-eighth. So that's what's happening in that realm. Any other unfinished business? All right, let's go forward to legislation then. Mr. Crum.
Ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-three. Amending section one thousand four hundred and ninety point one zero, general exterior maintenance requirements and one thousand four hundred and ninety point one four, yard area maintenance of chapter one thousand four hundred and ninety, exterior primary maintenance of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move for second, Mr. Martin. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin, let me know. Discussion?
Seems that Mr. Dean and Mr. Gates have met with the law director and he has some concerns with this the way it is written up. So I would move to refer this ordinance to the Public Works and General Operations Committee.
Second. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin that order number ten, two thousand twenty-three, be referred to the Public Works and General Operations Committee. Discussion? Mr. Rob.
Just a thanks to both Mr. Gates and Mr. Dean for taking care and making sure we get the legislation right instead of just trying to pass something for example.
Good. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
A motion to refer passes.
Ordinance number eleven, two thousand twenty-three. Amending ordinance number nine, two thousand twenty-three, annual appropriation from declaring emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance and ordinance be ran on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts that the rule require that an ordinance be run on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Motion to suspend passes.
Would the ordinance be taken up and passed?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of orders number eleven, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, this legislation comes on the recommendation of the finance director. He's very much concerned about cash flow in the fire equipment fund. The, the bulk of the money in that fund comes in the fall, after the end of the contract years where Sharon and, and Jackson Township pay for their, their fire protection. But which, which is the cause of the cash flow problem. So this, this legislation is in advance from the general fund to the fire equipment fund. You can see there are two line items there. One would be the seventy-five thousand dollars transfer to the fire equipment fund. And the second one then would be the return of that money to the general fund.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Order number eleven, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Ordinance number twelve, two thousand twenty-three. Repealing chapter two hundred and eighty-nine floodplain management permission of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
First reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Gates for the first reading of order number twelve, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? It would please, counsel, I can just thank Mr. Gates for bringing this to our attention. And having read through the ordinance and where we're at presently, I drew with those comments of our last meeting and made several comments during the Public Works and General Operations Committee that this commission acting as like a task force has completed their duties and has completed them well and worked out their state affairs because of their actions. But I think their job has, has been completed. Mission accomplished. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Order number twelve, two thousand twenty-three passes its first reading.
Resolution number nine, two thousand twenty-three. Declaring the intent to vacate an alley running perpendicular of West Main Street between lots five hundred and seventy-eight, five hundred and seventy-six, five hundred and seventy-five, and twenty-seven in the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the pass of resolution number nine, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion?
Well, thank you. First off, I want to thank you, counsel, for tabling this at the last meeting. I have traveled and came down with COVID for about two weeks solid. So I couldn't be here to speak in person other than address any concerns you may have about this particular petition. I know the only feedback I've heard so far is that this looks familiar, that some people thought this was already done. This was taken up a few years ago. It looks familiar, but I'd point out that this petition is different. What you looked at a few years ago, it vacated only a portion of this alley. This is the Weber Alley, that Weber bar in my building back up to. The previous proposal only vacated half of that alley, which left the city with half of an alley to maintain and then half of an alley that's part, goes to the bar. The new proposal in front of you vacates the entire Weber Alley. The previous petition had some procedural defects and signatures in process. And frankly, the precede, the previous petition was vocally opposed by the people who own my building of that type, which is understandable because it proposed only a portion of, a vacation only a portion of that alley. So we're proposing to vacate from end to end. You know, folks are familiar with Webers. They've got their tables out there down the alley now. Those tables have been there for a few years. It's pretty much Weber's patio at this point. But it's being subsidized by the public done. You know, the city's maintaining the alley, the city's maintaining Weber's patio at that end, basically. The only folks that use this alley are Weber's patrons and my staff going in and out of my building. Both Mr. Dutchland and I both privately, for right or wrong, maintained the brickwork. When I had brickwork done on my building, my bricklayer said, hey, I noticed there's some bricks that are missing back here. Can I just fill in? I said, yeah, go ahead and fill in those missing bricks. The trees are getting pretty gnarly, they're gonna be, have to, have to be addressed this spring. And like I said, this is basically private use property already, just being subsidized by the city. That's why we're making this request to, to vacate that dedicated. In full transparency, the reason I'm bringing it now is that I'm looking at selling off my parking lot there. And I would like to control the destiny of the alley. If it's ever vacated in the future, I would like to have the full portion behind my building connected to my building. If I sell that now and then it's vacated down the road, there's no guarantee that that person's gonna sell me the five-foot strip that's connected there. Since there's no present possessor interest, all I could do is get a contract with that person in the future. Like my contracts professor said, contracts like cards are made to be broken. So this would guarantee that I've been vacating that portion of the alley and attach it so that we can, we can level on it and take care of it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, but that's why you've seen something that looks familiar, but it's, it's different.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Allison? Any further discussion? Mr. Crum.
I may. First, I would just note I've been very clear in my objections to the current use of the Weber Alley from a legal's perspective. Second, I'm not aware of any fact or law which would change our opinion from this road that we were down two years ago. From a legal standpoint, I would certainly not recommend this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Resolution number nine, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Resolution number thirteen, two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement with Syntec Systems LLC for technology services for the city of Shelby declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts. A resolution thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, be taken up and passed? Roll call, I'm sorry, not roll call. Discussion, please. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, on the last page of the contract, it has Mr. Ensmann's name on it. While due respect, his name should be removed and yours added in his place. Then if we look at, the pages aren't numbered, but it's item eight, non-solicitation of employees. It, it doesn't have this phrase, but I think this is probably linked to a, I think they're called do not compete agreements, that some employers hoist upon employees, making them to sign as a condition of employment. I have some concerns about this. You know, that, that issue is something between, you know, Syntec and employees. But as I read this, it almost makes us, you know, party to that and agree in advance who we won't hire. I'm not willing to approve an agreement that ties the administration's hands on who it may or may not hire. Just not happy with this section eight at all. And therefore, I move that section eight be deleted in its entirety.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts that section eight be deleted in its entirety? Discussion? Mr. Martin.
If I could just get a thought from the law director on, under eight, at the very last sentence, it says this provision is considered material term that allows for accelerated termination rights under paragraph fourteen. How, how would deleting section eight then affect paragraph fourteen if it were linked by that language? If any? Those are termination divisions, they need to terminate contracts. So if we do that, they can terminate immediately. So it also provides for a hundred percent employees' fair market salaries if they're related to the image.
Mr. Rob.
Well, I, I don't particularly have a problem with section eight here. It's an agreement between the company and their employees not to move in and take business away from the company. I mean, it's a technology issues here. You know, you have somebody come in and, and work on your computer, they know the system, and, you know, offer a little bit less, to do it for a little bit less money, it sounds pretty good to me. And I don't have a problem with the company saying, hey, we're not gonna tolerate that. I, I just don't have an issue with that.
Mr. Rob.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it during the term of the agreement, because that makes sense, right? You don't wanna have them think that we're going to all of a sudden set up an IT shop and then hire the people that I assume they're gonna have some training, et cetera, et cetera, by Syntec. So my issue really comes down to the, the first sentence there where it says, and for a three-year period following the termination thereof. I think that that's a little, that, that piece is the part that gives me a little pause. I wouldn't necessarily mind a, you know, a six-month or a one-year period so, you know, we don't all of a sudden terminate the agreement and then the next day, set up shop with their employees. You know, again, I don't necessarily mind that, but the three-years does seem a little excessive, so. That, that would be only, my concern is that it's giving the scope outside the scope of the contract. Obviously, I, I sympathetic to Mr. Gates's argument, but I think that future administration, all they would have to do to get out of section eight is essentially terminate the contract. And then they would have full ability And then they would have full ability to do what they need to do. But this does put that, so I'm wondering if maybe a, I don't know, compromise is what you call. But if we made that from a three-year to a one-year period following the termination of the contract. Give flexibility to the future administrations, but still providing just protection to the company that we're contracting with.
Any further comments? The motion is to delete Section Eight in its entirety. That is how the motion reads it, discussion. The roll call on that motion to delete Section Eight in its entirety.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Nay.
Mr. Rob?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
That motion fails. Back to the main motion? Martin?
Mayor, I would move to amend Section Eight where it says for a three-year period following termination of to instead insert for a one-year period following termination thereof.
Second.
We have a motion to amend Section Eight, the second line down where it now reads for a three-year period, to amend that to read for a one-year period. That's a motion to amend that sentence. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, that still works a burden upon you for you.
Mr. Martin?
My only thing there is it does provide provision to where the two parties can't agree otherwise, so. May or may not, but at the end of the day, it's not our employee, it's their employee. And I assume they have a contract. You have to abide by the contract, especially, you know, when it comes to technology. Those aren't undue burdens to the employee that we're putting on.
Any other discussion? Further discussion? It's a motion then for the motion to amend from a three-year period to a one-year period. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion to amend passes. Back to the main motion? Any further discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I, on the certificate of the fiscal officer, we see this cost, and this is a costly annual contract. We knew it was going to be. We'd been getting good service at a bargain basement rate. We knew it was gonna come to an end at some point, and then we were gonna pay through the wazoo. And, you know, that's what this is, whether I, you know, nine thousand dollars a month roughly, yeah, eight thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars a month. So, it's a significant contract. My question is, how were these dollars allocated to the different line items?
Mr. Roberts?
We actually had a lengthy meeting about that.
Who's we, please?
Let's see, Mr. Gates, myself, Chief Combs was in there, the mayor, we were in that meeting. And we kind of took the input of current provider and the, what sections had the greatest usage. Police definitely have quite far that the greatest usage of our IT services. The court also tends to have a high usage. The, so the rest of it was sort of broken up, even I think five to ten percent. We did, instead of putting a little bit in each one of the various general fund items, we just put it in the Department of Finance for ease of accounting. We did spend a significant amount of time calculating usages to come to those numbers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Martin?
The only other question I had, obviously, we're looking at switching our systems at the utilities office. And we are confident that Syntec is prepared to provide service and help this with the transition.
The transfer is not being said, in agreement. Further discussion? The motion controlling the main motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution Number thirteen, two thousand twenty-three? Failed to produce emergency.
Resolution Number fourteen, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to participate in the ODOT road song contracts awarded in two thousand twenty-three declaring number one.
Will the resolution be taken and passed? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the pass of Resolution Number fourteen, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
This is our normal yearly application we do with ODOT. And as in the past, just put our request up eight hundred times here with ODOT, we haven't looked at that yet, but that comes out there on in the year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution Number fourteen, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Resolution Number fifteen, two thousand twenty-three, declaring the remains of a designated dwelling, fifty-five Second Street, to be insecure, unsafe, structurally defective, and dangerous to life and other property. Directing the mayor as director of public safety to enter into a contract with the Richland County Land Utilization Corporation for its demolition declaring emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the pass of Resolution Number fifteen, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
This structure has been on our radar, where we had the emergency kind of building department there, they, you've seen a copy of their report. And this would be the procedure that counsel authorized a couple of weeks ago to work with the land bank to go through all the proper procedures to give this one down.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, this one of the worst properties in town.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution Number fifteen, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Resolution Number sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a contract with Richland Engineering Limited, a Wallace Panter Group Company for engineering services to write the bid specifications and perform the ancillary oversight services for the demolition of the smokestack and the three connecting breeches located in the municipal light plant.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the pass of Resolution Number sixteen, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Martin?
If Mr. Ensmann can give us a report, I know with the windstorms and stuff like that, we had some new events that took place at the state. So, if he could just give us a briefing on what took place.
Sure. It's kind of Saturday during the high-windy event, we had another section of the breeching fall off. Along with the legging, the insulation was falling, but the piece of legging, I believe, fell and hit one of the circuits that supplied electricity out to the community. And three of the circuits tripped because of that. They were very close proximity to each other, and the legging fell. We believe it hit and struck one of the circuits, was tripped, we have three of the circuits on the council. So, they're all reclosed as they should have. But we are having issues with, I believe, to be about fifteen feet of the legging, and it's now peeled off with the high-windy vents. This is the third high-windy that we have this year, and each event, we do have some of that breeching fallen off. So, with that, where I wrote this, I did not look at it as emergency. But with that event, we're seeing more and more concerns. Just for consideration, maybe this as an emergency, just a second.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
As such, mayor hearing report, I move to amend with the appropriate language, make it emergency.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to amend with the proper language to make this resolution an emergency. Discussion on that amendment? Mr. Martin?
It's just very evident that, you know, we need to, now we're getting to the point where we really want to take care of it, we need to get it taken care of. And, you know, hopefully, time is still on your side.
Thank you. Further discussion? This is on the amendment to make this emergency. Resolution? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Amendment passes. The main motion. Further discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I'm looking at the boilerplate on the very end. I give the law director eagle-eyed warning on this for noting that it made reference to the common law of Pennsylvania, you scratch the state of Ohio, Richland County. Article six, right above that, my dispute resolution. I believe that section is in conflict with codified ordinance two-one-four-point-oh-one, which in effect says the City of Shelby doesn't go that way. We will not surrender our legal rights and that we go into the courts. So, I move that Article six be deleted in its entirety. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to delete Article six in its entirety.
And if I may just briefly address that, that called for mediation provision, people can mediate if they so choose. Our ordinance is for that binding arbitration, without counsel approval, which is why I didn't mark that up. I didn't view mediation as a horrible thing, I don't think it hurts the time that I'm giving. It was worth it.
Mr. Gates?
I think that mediation is like arbitration light. You know, a mediator tries to pull both sides together, have you thought about this or about that, having gone through that, you know? And so, with an arbitrator, an arbitrator sits as basically jury judge and executioner and imposes a settlement on those sides. But, you know, the courts exist for a reason, that when you have disputes over contracts and you can't resolve them otherwise. We have two fine judges over there in the Richland County courthouse, either one of them would be glad to resolve this.
Thank you. Further discussion? This is on the motion to delete Section six, Article six, rather in its entirety. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Back to the main motion, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution Number sixteen, two thousand twenty-three passes. I'll come to miscellaneous business, as in miscellaneous business, we brought before counsel. Mr. Martin?
This is a holy week, and so I would just like to share a wine, very happy Easter. And as we go into this week, if you'll allow me a personal anecdote, a aunt of mine, happens to be just a few years older than me, got a pretty serious prognosis diagnosis. And it happened very suddenly, she was doing okay, then three weeks later, she's where she's at, probably headed towards palliative care with a tumor. And it just does bring to light the fact that none of us has promise tomorrow. And so, embrace today and try to live each day, not with the promise of tomorrow, but with what today can hold for you and yours. Unfortunately, we get these periodic kicks in the gut reminders of how fragile life truly is. So, as we head into a holy week, that is obviously a dive stone of resurrection and what is and does exist for us on the other side, that's just a good reminder to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gates?
Thank Mr. Martin for those comments. He, I won't say he looked over at my crib notes, but we are also in the midst of Ramadan, and Passover begins this week. So, blessed Ramadan and Passover to those who celebrate those holy days.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I would counsel you.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion passes, counsel adjourns at eight oh five.
Mayor, I think you should supply the lime parts of the food at all.